I'd like to call and order the study session for February 16th, 2023. Stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
Mike Corilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Gerald Swetzes absent, Michael Schilling.
Here.
Joe Wizewati.
Present.
David Westlin.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
All right, first off, we got the, our discussions for tonight. One, the first one on the top here is EMS write offs.
Yeah, if, Mr. President, if we may kind of deviate just a bit, we wanted to talk about the Riverfront District and allow counsel to take his leave if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll move up item C tonight, I mean.
Okay, correct.
District license. Go through it and then see if anybody has any questions from the council.
Yeah, so as you know, we created the Riverfront District and designated that, and at this point, that allows up to 10 potential liquor licenses. So at this point, by ordinance, you need to adopt, and you don't have the ordinance that would formally adopt it in front of you because that's just going to be an ordinance that says we adopt these policies, right? And the first one is the compliance requirements and the criteria, and the second one, the second document you have is a formal written commitment. Both of these documents are drafted pursuant to statute and they set forth, kind of, the first one being the allocation and compliance requirements kind of set forth the goals of the area in terms of assisting in opening restaurants in the district by providing these additional liquor licenses at a, I would say below market cost, I guess would be the best way to put it. There are some factors on page two that you would consider, and I would note that part of the statute that allows for the Riverfront District, and Joe had asked this question to me earlier, part of that statute says that to get a liquor license in the, in the Riverfront District, you have to have at least 51% food sales. So you can't have what you would traditionally think of as a bar and grill, you have to have like a restaurant with a bar, and that's part of the statutory criteria to get, and if somebody doesn't comply with that, they risk losing their license. So they're also not transferable without the consent of the town, so, you know, I can't buy one of these liquor licenses at a discounted rate, you know, stay open for a few months and then turn around and sell it at what would be a market value, right, which would be a significant profit. So, so the statute, and without, it's a fairly lengthy statute, if you ever can't sleep in an evening, I would encourage you to pull that statute and try to read through it, it'll put you right to sleep. So, but it talks about the location, you know, it's got to be in the area and the physical elements, so when someone comes in to apply, they're going to have to show you what their plan is, right? And that's like kind of the key, you're going to get some ability to approve, to approve the plan and the design and then what they're doing, so you're going to know that this is a restaurant that has a three-way license as opposed to it being a bar and grill, right? I know that's a key factor, the fact that it's not transferable is a key factor.
And Dave, isn't it part of the law that they have to file a tax return, which is going to prove out the 51% sales in food?
Yeah.
They have to file, by law, file a tax return once a year with the state and St. John in order to document the fact that 51% of their sales were food.
Right, and, and all, and a second safeguard, and I know this from doing it for my own clients, is when you go to renew that license, you have to certify your receipts. So again, you're telling them, this is a percentage of food, this is a percentage of booze, right?
Booze, correct.
So those are all safeguards in there that you don't wind up with.
A bar.
A bar.
It's every five years, you're going to reapply for this? How many years do you get it?
The renewal is five years.
Five years, okay.
But annually, you're doing your tax return, right? So you're going to see it annually, and then everybody's going to see it again for sure in five years, right?
So, so I guess leads to the next question, so what happens after the first year of blatant disregard for these laws? Is there a mechanism to revoke immediately, and what is it?
There are, and I'd have, I got to find it in here.
But there is, there is a mechanism.
There is.
Like most, most laws, Michael, they're, they're pretty efficient.
So, part of the, you know, compliance review enforcement provision, successful applicants have to report to the commission concerning their operations, and you're, when I say the commission, I'm referring to the redevelopment commission, applicants will be notified in advance of scheduling, they may be requested to provide documentation of the RDC in advance of the meeting, including but not limited to alcohol and food sales menu, hours of operation documentation, and, you know, as you read through here, there are provisions in terms of being open five days, a week, and a minimum of five hours a time, so, you know, and I know you guys just kind of got this, so I would encourage the council to read through this document, and obviously if there are questions or concerns, feel free to let me know before next, if you're looking to adopt the ordinance on Wednesday, which you could, then obviously the sooner you get a chance to read this, the better, right? There's also a formal written commitment that commit, so that, so it's a contract, right, with the person who gets the license, and the formal written commitment says, I'm going to do all those things, right, and I'm going to, I'm going to come to the redevelopment commission. It's in exchange for getting a license at a less than fair market value.
Right.
So, so it really locks them into being, you know, compliant, and you being the gatekeeper of that compliance, following all the town rules.
There is one other, one other piece that's important, and that is, this liquor license is assigned to a specific address only, and if for any reason the facility closes or goes out of business, that license remains at that address, and if you tear the building down, that address becomes non-existent as far as that liquor license, and the liquor license is no longer valid, it's done.
It is assigned to the individual and the, and the location.
And the address, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. There would be a mechanism that if the town agreed, so let's say they went out of business and next door wanted to open up, there's a mechanism that allows the town to agree
Transfer.
To let it be transferred next door.
Correct, okay.
So you, you're about 99% right with what you just said.
That's better than 100%.
Yeah.
So, under, under section six of the commitment, under I, it says, any breach of the foregoing covenants render this commitment voidable at the sole discretion of the town, so there is mechanisms to, you know, void out the, the commitment with them, which would void out, effectively avoid out their license.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, basically.
So we have ultimate control.
You have ultimate control, and they got to do, basically, it's a way of saying, they got to come in and propose a restaurant that you agree, and then they've got to do what they say they're going to do, and if they don't, they're going to get their license revoked.
And there's vehicles by which they have to prove it every year.
Yeah.
And you can have them come in even prior to the end of the year. So, yeah, yes, is the answer to the question.
Okay.
Nicely done, Dave.
Yeah, looks, looks like a very nice vehicle for economic growth.
What about if there's like a nuisance, like maybe they're drug dealing or something, fights, different things like that, is there?
We would be revoking their license.
Right, but we, we don't need that in, in this agreement.
Well, hopefully we won't have people fighting in restaurants, yeah.
I don't think drug dealing's part of this deal.
Well, you'd never know what happens.
That's right.
I mean, the, I, I think the concept that everybody's working off of is that this is a.
A draw for restaurants.
A sit-down waitress comes to the table type of, I don't know that I want to say fine dining, but not fast food, not, not, you know, what do they call that?
Drive-through.
If, you know, simple fast, whatever the heck that is, where, you know, it's supposed to be like a, a restaurant, like when we were kids, you go, you get a waitress comes over and you can get a drink.
Or waiter.
Yeah, or waiter.
Minor done.
Nothing wrong with minor done.
No, I'm saying, minor done.
Yeah, don't rip on minor done.
Good hamburgers. Yes, it is.
So we'll have the ordinance drafted, which will adopt the application requirements and the, the commitment letter, as well as authorizing the issuance of the, or authorizing the licenses, permits.
Exciting.
Nice.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Finally, after three years and three months.
Anybody got any other questions on the?
This is all TIF district, right?
Yeah.
So do we get tax money right away, or do we, is it, if it's a 10-year TIF, does it go 10 years and then we start getting taxes, or we get taxes right away, but not everything that we would get after 10 years?
You get it, you get it right, you get the TIF dollars right away, but, so like, and I don't know the, Beth might know off the top of her head, when those, this area is, when they expire, I mean, if they were 20 years and originally, or 25, I'm not sure. You get it for the period of time that the TIF's, right, and then, so in your example, 10 years, which I know, I think this is longer than 10.
Right.
It's closer to 20, you're going to get it for that period of time, then the TIF goes away, right, the district goes away.
Right, then you'll get more money.
Then, then, no, then you get less.
Less.
Then it goes back, then you get, then you get your, roughly speaking, a third of the school, a third of the county, a third of the town.
Okay.
All right, roughly speaking.
Of the increment, right, increase in increment, right, so.
No, no, hang on.
The property taxes, the whole.
Of the whole, right, during the time, during the increment, during the time of the TIF, you're getting the whole.
That's right.
Right, so, so for the next, whatever years until that thing expires, you're getting the whole.
Okay.
When it expires, you're going to get your third like you would get with any other property in St. John that wasn't in a TIF district.
All right.
So that's a great question, so what happens with this Riverfront District if, let's say, the TIF expires? Does this expire?
It is a portion of the TIF, so.
This is an enhancement to a TIF.
Right.
But you can also renew the TIF.
This is hooked onto the TIF, so if the TIF expires.
I think you're done, but I'd have to, I'd have to consult with Phil.
So can we also find out what, so I don't know how many years we, we would love to know when we, when we put this one in.
The Riverfront District has to be part of, of a.
TIF district.
Development area, redevelopment, RDA, it's got to be.
Okay, now, no one can predict, like, so, this is a fairly, fairly new phenomenon, right, these Riverfront Districts, and everyone's like, all right, yeah, put it in a TIF, whatever. I don't know, and, and in reading the statutes, I don't, I didn't see a provision for what happens when the TIF expires, right, like, I don't know that anyone's really contemplated that, because these are so new, and most of your TIF areas are 15 minimum, although they could be 10, 15, most of the time they're 20 or 25.
Right, so Beth, can we find out for sure when our TIF, our current TIF number one expires, and when we installed it, and maybe get some advice on if we should redo it now or late, you know, some, some.
Renew it, yeah.
Just look at that, take a careful look at this, we're about to do this, so let's make sure we look at the whole pie, what should we do with the entire TIF, this is within it.
And if we have to renew it.
It hasn't been in that long.
I'm sorry.
It hasn't been in that long.
Well, I mean, the TIF started in.
TIF number one started.
Strax and Target.
Right.
So it's been there a while.
That's 20 years, or 19 years.
That's oh four, oh six.
But was it redone after that at some point?
I don't know why oh five sticking him in my craw for that, but it might have been oh five, oh six.
All right.
I think oh six too late, it might have been oh five.
And then if we redo it, do we lose the, the increment that is within it now?
Can, statutorily, can it be extended out?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can we renew it?
Extended?
Can we renew it?
It can be extended, let me find out the answers to those compelling questions.
Thank you.
Compelling questions.
Now then, when is too late?
Any other questions from the council?
We're, we're sure you're in TIF number one.
That is.
Okay, number one, all right. All these predated me.
Me too.
Well, I don't know, something got changed with, because they added Gamar into that TIF area, so does that go back to the?
I vaguely recall, so don't take this like as gospel, I vaguely recall some sort of renewal of that TIF when Chris Salatas was around, because that's when the whole idea of the Riverfront initially.
They renewed it and added it in the area.
Yeah.
So it's possible, we also.
Which is why I don't want to give you a date today, because I have this recollection of conversations with Chris.
We also, at that same time, we were creating the senior citizen TIF, so I don't know if we, just, I don't know if we redid this or not, I know we created that one, so, over by the gates.
That would be good to know. Yeah.
When did we issue the, the bonds on the, for 96th?
Those would have been probably 2015.
So I think, I think, because we have debt outstanding on it, obviously.
Probably 18.
Was it 2018?
2018.
So if we've got a debt outstanding on it, obviously we could renew it.
How long are those bonds, 20 years?
Probably 20.
I believe they are 20 years, yeah.
Yeah, so you can't have a TIF expire before.
Right, so it, it probably goes to at least, at least, what, 2038?
We'll get the, yeah, we'll get the exact numbers on that, because it would, it would,
it would probably say on the, the, when they issued the bonds.
And, and at the same time, let's find out if, if renewable for how long, and so we can then determine when we should either look at it, or maybe if we can just renew it for 20 more years, to renew it now going forward, if it's renewable.
All right.
Good idea.
Nice work, Dave.
Anybody got anything else on the Riverfront District? All you have, Dave?
That's all I had, yeah, for tonight.
We got anything more for Dave, Joe?
Not tonight, I don't believe, no. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Are you going to look into the other two issues, Dave, with the, those fees? Okay.
Yeah. Because you definitely want to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you also want to push the, is it the 93rd and 41 project you want to put second?
Yeah, we're going to move that up next if we can.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westlin.
Have a good night.
You too.
Careful out there, it's getting nasty.
All right, next we'll move item E up to, you want to talk about that, Joe?
Yeah, so, as you know, we, we opened the bids, we reviewed the bids, we've got a recommendation on the bids, and get a little update on, on where we're at with things, so if you would, Scott.
Okay. If you don't mind my next. Good night.
Thank you.
Hi, doing fine, sir? How are you?
Good evening, everyone, hope everybody's well, and this weather holds up a little bit, so we do have a responsible bidder, NFH Passion, the contract documents are in order. Oh, I'm sorry, I just jumped right into it. Yeah, Scott Pruitt, First Group Engineering, my apologies, all right, and contract documents are in order, AT&amp;T has a permit in with the town for the relocation of their facilities, they're going to be using a subcontractor called Always Underground, so you'll see them out here shortly once the permit is approved, and they plan on being completed by March 14th, so they'll be the first in the ground, and then we're working with Comcast in conjunction with them since they share poles. I've just presented some sample fencing concepts to you to look at regarding the types and locations, so there's different methods of mounting, whether you want to go in-ground, above-ground, bolt it to the sidewalk, different things like that, we can talk about that more in detail, it's more on the engineering side. We did present closing documents for the right-of-way acquisition, they've been presented to the town for review, if you find the language in those satisfactory, we'll have our buyer, Steve Klima, prepare them and make the offer and present that to the owner, and then on the ninth, we submitted a construction engineering agreement for your review to do the supervision and management for the project. So far, everything is tracking as we anticipated, do you have any questions? Job is awarded, under budget, so, so far, we're looking good.
How much did we anticipate the project cost, and then where are we at on, on our, our portion of the project cost for that?
Project estimate was 4.1 million, Passion came in, I think, with around 3.65, was that it? 3.65, or 3.75, I'm sorry.
Does that include the property?
No, that's. No, that did not.
Could, could you give us a breakdown as far as what the, the water portion of that was, because we're going to have that discussion next week with them.
Well, I don't have the itemized proposal of water portion, do you have it in there? I'm sorry, good.
Yeah, so water was 889, 585.
Okay, water portion was 889, 585, thank you, Sean.
So that would put the project at approximately?
Actually, at that, the, sorry, my name is Sean Strange, by the way, with First Group of, kind of helping Scott.
Yeah, Scott, or, I'm sorry, Sean, can you come up by Scott and, sorry, yeah, thank you.
Didn't mean to muscle in here, I do have the numbers written down. So the water, all the water items were 889, 585, the road items were 2,867, 354, so the water and the road together was 3.756 million.
So the 2.8, we're probably real, really close to where we'd be on, on, on budget with the, the bond proceeds that we do have for that.
All right, any other questions on that?
Quick question, and so when should we expect lane restrictions to start for, for residents and drivers?
When we, well, after we get the notice to award and notice proceed and contract document signed, we usually will target April 1st, the utilities will be, hopefully have a lot of the work, we're going to be working in conjunction with the contractor, but mid-March to mid-April, you'll see lane restrictions, we'll have to get the detour route set up first, that'll be the first thing that'll go up.
Okay.
Estimated time of completion?
November 30th, so if everything goes well, we don't have any problems that are anticipated.
Thanksgiving time, right at Thanksgiving time.
Of course.
You have to get an item permit for this?
I believe, I believe there is an item permit that's going to be required on this.
Yeah, the Rule 5 is, that's in process, and then we will have an indot permit for right-of-way, I know that you had some questions about possible lighting that we can address at 96, well, no, at 93rd.
It should be separate from the, the contract, obviously, but.
Right.
You know, we definitely want to discuss lighting options on that.
Right, that was the other thing about that, because it's.
For that intersection over there.
We do have the foundation and conduit as part of this project, so basically, the only thing left would be to get the poles and luminaires and a contractor, contractor to install that, so that was the only thing kind of left out at this point, as well as what's called a service point, depending on how you want to draw electricity to it, so.
And that's not included in the price?
Yeah, that is not included in the price of the project.
The, the, basically, the, all the pre-work's going to be there.
Correct.
But the, the final product, yes.
Foundation's laid, but not the final.
The product isn't going to be included.
Right, the final product was, and I don't think the budget constraints at this time.
Right, and that's what we were looking at, is how would we shave this down a little bit, so.
Yeah, the intent is to put all the underground infrastructure in place, so that the next step would simply be to get the, the power to it and the bolt the poles on the foundations.
Now, did that include the, his thing? For the, the conduit?
The fiber optic conduit and the vault.
Yes, that is included in that.
That's all included in there.
What's the cost of the fiber optic?
It was like 75, I think.
Thousand?
Yeah.
I think so, is around that.
I, I want to say that was the add-on, that, when they were going through.
We really don't need fiber optic, I mean, it's nice, but we got to connect the whole town, you're just putting it in one area, and we brought this up once before, we were, we're wasting money by putting that, that cable in, or that, that conduit, because we'd have to connect the whole town to fiber optic to try and get all, everything going, our lift stations and everything, and that's probably a waste of money.
That's.
I, I mean, I'm not criticizing you guys, I'm just, we, we were going to do that once before, and we said, we were going to do a, a project from Primrose to Magnolia with conduit, well, where's it going? It's not going anywhere. It's, it's a, to me, I, I think you have to be good stewards of the money, is it really necessary?
But, and Wayne, to your point, you know, we had that conversation when they were talking about Acorn 2, when they were, put out the, the bid on that, for all of that, and that was one of the things, I said, why are we doing that in those areas, it doesn't make sense, you know, it's like you, you got a little bit here and a little bit here, to me, it didn't make sense, and I, I'm not going to disagree with you, but I know Jason had, you know, there was, there was actually some reasoning behind that for getting under 93rd for some reason, and I, if, if we can ask him to kind of chime in on that.
Getting conduit underneath US 41 is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we do not get this option, you know, it doesn't come along every day, so if we can just get some conduit underneath 41, you know, that is 80% of the battle right there, I mean, the rest of the right-of-way is, you know, relatively easy to deal with, it's just, anytime you have to deal with indot, you know how that is, so if we can, I'm just asking for the conduit from basically Town Hall to Kyleman, that's what, 1,000 feet, give or take? 2,000 feet?
That's, that's $75,000 that could be thrown towards your lighting that you want to put up, that we don't have the money for, I, I just can't see putting in a, a road that goes nowhere, meaning the conduit.
Right, right.
So explain to me, so what is the, what, fiber optic, you know, I know that sounds fancy, and I know we need fiber optics in this world, right, we're moving, we're moving, and we're in 21st century, we're moving along, so what is, what is the usefulness of running that conduit over there at 75,000, once it gets done, what is that going to do for us?
It will allow us to eliminate the cellular fees that we are paying for, like lift station seven, which is at the bottom of the Teal Street, it will, if we were to extend the conduit all the way to Prairie West Park, that would eliminate the cellular fees for that, or that lift station as well, there's also the security cameras that are out there, there's a cellular modem providing services for that, so it'll eventually save town money over time.
So can we get a cost analysis of that, so what is, what are those things costing, so we have a general idea, what, what is the ROA on something like this? I would love to know that.
Well, and running fiber optic cable too, because it, running fiber optic cable is not cheap either, you know, to.
And does residents directly have access to this fiber optics?
No.
Or just for the town?
It's just for the town.
It would just be for the town.
So then we can quantify basically what, what the ROI should be.
And I, it's going to be very shocking, I'm, I'm sure the numbers are going to be pretty shocking, so 75,000.
That's just the cable, there's no fiber optic in the cable.
Right, so the, the conduit, so yeah, that's just running the conduit.
And that's a three-inch conduit.
Is it three?
It's actually, you put a triple inch and a half HDPE conduit, kind of like what you see up and down the highways, so you have one carrier and you have a couple of spares, and then quasi-hand holds that are about three and a half by five feet, and then that's why if you have to do a loop in the fiber, you can, you have sufficient size to do that, and his point is, it's, if you have everything broken and tore up now, it's easier to stall it now than to go back and do it later, but you still have that option, whatever you choose to do, it's not, the contract's not built yet.
So let's ask, so other towns, you do work in other towns?
Yes.
You have, you've seen this done before, I'm sure Crown Point, you know.
Yeah.
Valapresel, other towns, what do they do?
They, they are putting it in for future use.
They're putting it in, right, because you don't, you know, they're, for 75,000, and it's a $4 million project, if we're going to come in later to do this, that's impossible, right, so, or it costs you a fortune, so.
You can do it later, it's just a cheaper option usually to do it now, so other municipalities are installing this as future use, and as they get, build out their infrastructure, they're including the fiber and the cabinets, so East Chicago has, I think, for instance, a partnership with maybe Nitco. a partnership with maybe NITCO, building out a local fiber network. Hobart is putting in future-use conduit on new construction projects now. So it is, it's pretty popular, and it's pretty common now, because at least the vehicle is there to install it for the future.
Is there any discussion underway, not specifically St. John, but as far as bringing fiber optics to the region, and by the region, Northwest Indiana? What is the AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or whoever's putting in fiber optics? What's their projections on future installation? Do you know?
In this county, no. Every community is kind of doing their own thing. For instance, Verizon, I think it was AT&amp;T, they partnered up with Vermillion County, and every single county road has the same fiber conduit running down it, to build out a fiber network to rural areas. So with the technology that's changing and 5G, how fast this can move, that's difficult to say.
Is there Fed money already being applied to this project?
No, this is all locally funded, locally funded project.
Okay, no, no, I was just curious.
Oh, on the other side, no. A lot of the contractors or the communications companies are doing this in partnership with municipalities, right.
Out of their pockets, yeah.
Yeah, working partnership.
Can you kind of, I know, Sean, you want to, if you want to...
Didn't beg on track with the...
Yeah.
Just a real quick interjection. Where fiber is going in at, you're seeing third parties. It's not the AT&amp;Ts or Horizons of the world, you're seeing third parties. MetroNet is one. Frontier is starting to jump into this. You're seeing others that are names that are popping up. It's a very dog-eat-dog business where they are popping in at, and what you're seeing is, is a lot of problems with municipalities. They're just sticking it in wherever. I see them sticking it in places without permits, knifing it into the ground right below the sod. I've personally had instances in neighborhoods where I've seen where they've nicked natural gas feeds to houses. So it's kind of a nightmare right now, to be quite honest. Doing it this way is a lot easier in the planning sessions. So I just wanted to add that in.
Yeah, and if, Scott, if you could, just kind of, explain exactly what kind of lane movements, we're going to have additional lane movements, that kind of, how this is going to look, you know, so they can kind of have an understanding of, when you're going westbound on 93rd, you're going to have this lane, this lane, this lane.
Right, so the, right now, we know, you all know the constraints. So when this project is finished, you'll have a dual left turn going eastbound on 93rd, and then you'll have a through lane going west on, or east on 93rd, then you'll have a dedicated right-turn lane also, in front of the church. So that'll give you a lot more storage capacity. It should help the backups, backup's a great deal at Kyleman Street. So the real emphasis on 93rd, minimal work is being done on 41, except around the radius, is to tie everything in together. But you, the capacity is the problem overall. And then we are improving Kyleman also, where you'll have a northbound left turn at Kyleman, and then a northbound right. Right now, you only have, so if you have one left turn, that stacks traffic up Kyleman a lot. So that's really the scope of the entire project. And then in future use, you can take that right turn lane, if you, the development, if perhaps the Boyer property on the southeast corner, where the old dentist office is, if that building is removed and that curb is widened, then you could have that also, that lane is a through right. You would have dual eastbound lanes, and then that would neck down into a single eastbound lane as it got by the Town Hall, for a future widening project on that corner.
This project is going to only be on the west side of 41.
The majority of the widening, you are correct in that, sir. The majority of the widening will be west of US 41 and at Kyleman. There is a small right turn lane on the northeast corner to allow probably, what's it, three, three and a half cars in there? A small right-turn lane to add a little bit more storage capacity and movement on the westbound side of things. But we didn't acquire right-of-way at that because of a gas station and all the additional cost for that. And then the rest of the road on the east side, it'll be a resurface up to the west right-of-way of the tracks by Town Hall. So, because there's water main on that side also.
You're going to move the pole in the middle of the street?
We couldn't work on that.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do. We got to find out who...
I talked to NIPSCO about that this week.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're, they're going to be talking to you on that.
Oh, yeah, we'll work on it. All right, anything else, sir?
No, I don't have anything. Jason, on the, with your fiber optic, what's the ultimate end game that you're trying to achieve here? Are you wanting to hook up the treatment plant on 41, the park?
If...
Do you have a plan of what you want done here, after we put this conduit in?
If money was absolutely no object, yes, I would eliminate the cellular network from the SCADA system entirely and save that money. But I understand that money is a tight thing, so I'm just going to eliminate the ones that are closest to the Town Hall right now, the low-hanging fruit. I mean, that's Teal Street, that's Prairie West Park. That's three devices that we can save, you know, for, you know, the cost of this.
How much does it cost? Maybe we can, you can get that information before our next meeting and say, okay, if we bore that from 93rd to the lift station over here by the Vorix, and we can do some other stuff, then it might be worth it. But, you know, I know you're big on the fiber optic, just like we got a transition line for Wells 8 and 9, and that's just about all done. You got 2,500 feet to go for Well 9 to tie in, and then we got connectivity with 8, 9, and the treatment plant, so.
Correct, and then if we put fiber in the conduit that is part of that project, then Wells 8, 9, and the water tower will not need to have a cellular connection, because they could all feed to the treatment plant, and then use its cellular connection to the rest of the system.
Can you find out within the next week or four days what that, what we could save?
I can certainly give it my best effort. I will...
That might help us.
That would be great. I think that's a great idea.
I think that could help us.
Right.
Good idea, what we're going to say.
Because we're, it's money that's going to be spent. If you have a good end plan to your thing here, then we'll go with it.
Right.
Because 75 grand in today's prices could be 125 grand in three to five years.
And cellular costs go up every single year.
Oh gee, what a shock.
Is there, is there a yearly contract on those cellular deals? Is it like 10 years, or is it every year, we got to keep renewing on that?
Verizon, we have a yearly purchase order renewal, but for Verizon, and they are not under the state contract, but they follow the state contract prices. The AT&amp;T firstnet contracts are state contract, so the state controls those prices.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Sean, thanks.
All right, move along, EMS write-offs?
Okay, so the resolution that you guys have before you tonight, with some exhibits along with that as well, we've got a total of $265,738.96 for the period of January 1 to June 30 of 2022. That breaks down as follows. $12,578.62 is uncollected debt, $28,217.03 due to Medicare contractual assignment, and then $224,943.31 for Medicare contractual assignment. So these are going to be done, you know, usually every six months.
Anybody from the board got questions?
What a bad deal.
What's that?
What a bad deal we get.
Yeah, well, when Medicare sets the prices, that's...
That's on government.
Yeah, and the thing is, is once you accept Medicare assignment, you can't collect on the secondary half.
It happens every year, so nothing you can do about it. All right, any, any questions on that? Move along, next item is the ARPA authorization.
Oh wait, we forgot the speed limit.
Speed limit one, Mike.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you wanted to move...
So, yeah, this is actually...
The speed limit ordinance, okay.
Yeah, so this would be an amendment to the town's traffic code. So this basically is going to be covering the speed limit and a stop sign. So the town of St. John previously adopted changes to the traffic code to comply with the state law. Law establishes a minimum speed limit for residential areas of no, no less than 25 miles an hour and no greater than 30 miles an hour. The amendment presented establishes that speed limit, because this is an amendment, it's not reiterating everything we've already done, the speed limit for West 93rd Avenue, except between West Oak Ridge and Clermont, to 30 miles an hour. Is that right, Darrell?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, it's going to Alcott.
Okay. Oh, it is Alcott?
Yeah, we're going to Alcott because we had a double fatality there.
Okay. It says Clermont in here, though.
No, instead of West Oak Ridge, it's Alcott.
Okay, never mind. Okay. So additionally, this will codify two additional stop signs located at, what is it, Water Leaf and White Oak. There's a three-way stop, well, there's one there now, but this codifies that. So that way, the police officers can write traffic citations legitimately.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So those are the only amendments on that ordinance.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I do have a quick question. So I noticed that Parish was changed with a 40 or 45, it was changed to 30 recently. Why was that? What was behind that?
Well, the state law basically mandates that in a local suburban area, that your minimum speed limit is 25 miles per hour. So your residential areas are 25. We had some that were 20, they're now 25. That complies with the state law. The change to 30 is that's the maximum. So if you want to do higher than 30, it's permissible, but you've got to jump through a lot of hoops in order to get that. There's traffic studies, engineering that needs to be done. And how much did you say that would cost roughly, Darrell?
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's...
A hundred thousand?
It's a lot. Correct, each segment, yeah.
So Parish, but Parish is not a residential street.
Yeah, go ahead. It's a local street, though.
If you want to come up with...
Darrell, come on, yeah. You're here working, come on.
Yeah.
Here's Darrell.
And Darrell, thank you for doing all the work that you did on the stop signs and the speed limits. It's greatly appreciated.
So what we did was, when we redid the ordinances, we were redoing all the town ordinances, and now was the time to come into state statute. State statute says, under urban district, you cannot go beyond 30 miles an hour, but you can drop to 25. But you can't go any further than that, unless it's designated as a school zone, which we can drop it to 20 miles an hour in front of Clark Middle School. So that's the only restrictions that the state law says. You cannot go beyond that. So we were conforming to what state law says.
Got it.
So as you notice on Parish and Klein, as you're going south, counties already redid theirs, they did theirs about a year ago. If you notice, if you're going south, it changes to 30, and it's been that way for a couple of years now. So as soon as you go past 109th, it changes over to 30, because they conform to state law, which we were still at 40 miles an hour. So that's why we had to conform to what state law says.
So I'm not trying to match what you just said first to what came second. So the first one was residential, it's got to be no higher than 30, can't be, you know, lower than 25, but that doesn't seem, in my mind, Parish doesn't match that description.
Well, it's not, it doesn't say residential. It says urban district. So we are considered urban, we're not rural. Rural would be like your country roads and things like that. We are considered an urban district, which we have...
All roads like that within town got, can't be higher than 30?
Can't be higher than 30.
Unless we go through this traffic study.
Unless you go, you have to have a traffic survey done, and you have to have a traffic engineering done on each segment of the road, which is astronomical numbers.
So just for, I think it'd be nice to know for everybody, can, I just like to know cost of stuff. So if it was possible, and if you guys can maybe send it to all the councilmen when you've got time, what the cost of those type of studies are?
Yeah, I mean...
You know, if it's useful for residents not to have a 30 mile an hour road on certain roads, and I'm not saying that Parish is, and it costs X for this study, maybe it's worth it, not to have 30 miles an hour, if it, if it clearly doesn't need to be so. So, and that's why they have, I would just love to know, what is, what is the remedy and what is the cost of that?
Okay, yeah, I mean, probably the engineering would be able to answer that question.
And I think, first, we'd want to have our own, our own guys take a look and see if it's warranted to go from 30 to 40, before we go through that next phase. So I would want something from the police department to say, yeah, let's take a look at this, and then we can cost out what it's going to cost us.
And especially with, especially like, for instance, Parish, which was at 40.
Right.
You see all the entrances, that's going to go into all these subdivisions, okay? That, I mean, our job here is to keep all the roadway safe, you know, raising that speed limit, and people pulling out of subdivisions, trying to beat a 40 mile an hour vehicle will not end well.
And you've got a park car crossing through there, too.
We have, and we have the new park that's right there.
Without a doubt. We want to make sure the roads are safe, but there likely is going to be a scenario where it's safe and it doesn't need to be 30 at some point. So it'd be nice to know what those costs are.
The problem, the problem too, is, much as 93rd, is when you have a 30 mile an hour speed limit, people do 50. And when you have a 40 mile an hour speed limit, people are going to be doing 60. I mean, it's just a fact of life, and therefore, it makes things even more dangerous.
It does, and that's our thing, is to keep the citizens safe here, you know, and that's, and we're conforming to, and that's why state law changed it. That's why they changed it, is to keep our roadways more safe. So that's why when they changed the law about, I want to say about four or five years ago, they changed it to this, is to keep the roadways more safe.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell.
Thank you.
You.
Any other questions about the speed limit ordinance? Move along, we got the ARPA authorization.
There is one correction on there, that the first one is 309,600. So that would make the total 415, 975, 52.
That's not for a total, ARPA money spent, is it?
No, sir.
Okay, because that's what I want you to do, because we got, with everything, we got $4,259,683.36 for the town. So on this, what we got now, the Vigilant Solutions plate and the reader camera, that figure, $29,715, that's correct, but it's also going to cost $16,576 to install. So that's a total of 46,291. Plus, we spent money on 85th Street, that was, 85th Street is going to cost us $262,436.53. 96th Avenue, we paid out money on that, it was $36,682.51. And then we paid a retaining fee for 85th Street project at $27,897.18. That's a total of $327,016.22. If you add that to your 415, 375, 52, it comes out to $742,391.74. Plus, you have a fire truck that's going to go in there. That's another 300,000. We got two Dodge Durangos for 88,000. So my goal to Joe was, I wanted to see the breakdown, every time we do something with ARPA money, and that was out in an email, and I think Jerry chimed in and said, yeah, he wanted to see that too. I think it helps us as a council to find out where all that money is going.
Right.
Just to make sure that we get somewhere, oh, we ran out of money. I don't, I don't want to see that. You know, we had meetings with the public.
Unfortunately, we're going to run out of money at some point, but...
Well, yeah, a total of all the projects that all the departments wanted to do was 11, 11 million, I think.
Right, and we brought that down to, to...
And then we...
Tell us out with the ARPA fund.
Well, let's be clear, we're not going to run out of money. We're going to spend the money in the ARPA fund, because we have to spend the money in ARPA fund.
Correct.
By a certain date, right?
Right.
We're not going to run out of money.
It beats just putting it out there.
Running it out.
And then when, we had that meeting about the two cars that we bought, that we had to get, and we were saving $15,000, and it was told to us that the dealership, somebody didn't pick up their cars. Well, that wasn't true. I called the dealership. Those were stock vehicles that had to be put into a different category for the state, so we could buy... Those were stock vehicles that had to be put into a different category for the state so we could buy them. So that wasn't a truthful thing that why we had to buy them. Cuz I, I said to myself, why would somebody, why didn't, why would municipality not buy these cars? I mean, they're, they're at a premium because it's hard to get the state contract. So these, these two, well, there was two vehicles, more vehicles that, they were more expensive. They, they bought, he, they were told, we need a cheaper vehicle, so that's what we got. And that's what happened. And then the one vehicle, it was the Traverse, it's $32,260. That's the one that sits out here and it's a town vehicle and it should have a town sticker on it. So whoever takes that, if you're taking, if you're proud enough to cash your check that, cuz you work for the town, you should be proud enough to drive that vehicle with a town label on it, not keep it, not keep it as a unmarked vehicle.
Do you mind, who did you talk to? Cuz I like to talk to them, too.
I, I
Who you talked to at the, at the car dealership?
I've talked to who was ever on the, on the purchase.
What was their name?
You have to look at the request.
Did you send that to me? Cuz I'm very interested in that information.
Yeah, you can ask the Joe for that.
Would like you to send me what you have, I would like, that's, that's very important to me. I mean, you, I appreciate you doing the homework on that.
Well, I, okay.
I'd like to pursue that as well.
You can pursue it.
It's alarming to me, would you please send that to me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it didn't answer the question, why is that vehicle gonna be unmarked? The only unmarked vehicle should be a, a police car that, like maybe the police chief has or if they're running surveillance on something, they, they are entitled to have an unmarked car. It should be, it should have the, the town emblem on there.
Well, it actually does have the town emblem on there, but if you want one bigger, I could put one
I mean, like, like what they have on a Public Works truck.
So I'll put one that says, yeah, the logo on there, that's, that's fine. If, if the council wants it on like that, that's fine, there, there is a
I, I just think that that's, that's
There is a decal on there now.
You want a bigger emblem on there?
I've, I've never seen the emblem on there. So how big is the emblem that you're talking about?
It's on the vehicle, I mean, if you wanna take a look at it, it sits out there.
Well, if it's only like this, no, it should be the, the circle, like just like on a Public Works truck, on a dump truck. It says Town of St. John, that should, that should be put on there.
Yeah.
Oh, look at the emblem.
Get a nice emblem on there, please, Joe.
We'll, we'll put it, I'll put a really big one on there.
For Joe, I thought that was supposed to be a pool car.
It is a pool car.
So why would you say Joe?
I was asking Joe to put a nice emblem on there.
Oh, I thought you said we'll put one on there for, for Joe.
No.
That's what I thought.
Asking Joe to put a nicer emblem on it.
So anyway, the revised figure is 415,975.52. That resolution will be prepared and in your packets for next week's meeting.
And that's what we spent so far this year.
I was gonna say, we had other funds on there as well. Um, I will give you the breakdown as well, so you can have that.
We spent at least $742,000, it's probably a little bit more than that. It's probably close to 800,000 or a million, if you add everything else in there.
I don't think we're close to a million.
Well, you got 5,000 for uniforms and then 88,000.
I'll, I'll give the council a breakdown of what's been spent.
And once it's
What's been authorized, they should say.
That would be great.
And once it's set up, Joe, it's easy to follow, you just keep
Absolutely.
And that's all I'm asking for.
I've sent you the spreadsheet a few times.
And I see, I see the spreadsheet, but there was all on there, so I had to go through the request to purchase to get, get some of that information. So
Is there some way, cuz now we have a communications director, is there some way of having, you know, I, I'm 100% for transparency, some way of showing on our Facebook page or somewhere else, our, our ARPA money, what we're spending and how we're doing it? I'm, I'm totally transparent, there's nothing to hide here.
We can have a financial
And what we spend
Spreadsheet put out there for ARPA money, they can click on it and we can update it.
That would be great.
Okay, can we put that under financials or something?
Big spotlight is healthy.
I don't, I don't see it as a problem.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, that would be one
It's already
You're at about 900,000 with the, the property acquisition project on 93rd. Cuz you're at, without that, 596,227.6 plus 310, is it?
Yeah, 3, 309,600, yeah, 310,000. That would be great.
That'd be great. Anything else on this matter? Move along, you got the dollars for scholars?
So there's a request for Lake Central's dollar for scholars. They have a request for $500 for this program. Just wanted to bring it to the council before we moved forward on that.
All right. Is this something that we yearly donate to them? I've seen it before.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, Lake Central?
It's, yeah, I, I think we do also for Hanover, too.
And Hanover?
We do St. John Evangelist, though?
No, you do Lake Central and Hanover matching them up.
Do we just, Beth, would we just preemptively do the Hanover one as well at the same time? Would that make sense? Or do we wanna wait for the request? I don't know.
They generally just authorize both at the same time.
So we'll put that on the agenda for next week, all right.
I think, is it a thousand apiece? Is that what you do? I can't remember.
They're asking for 500 for a quantity of, of whatever.
I'm sorry, I tried.
Was that a thousand?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought it was a thousand each, or well, I don't, I can't speak for Hanover.
I, I thought it was a thousand each, but I, we could look that up.
Well, we'll see.
Highest bidder.
This turned into an auction or what?
You're bidding against yourself.
I was just gonna say. All right, any questions on the dollars for scholars?
Well, and that's gonna be on the agenda for next week, for both of those, we'll just, we'll figure
Reach out to the Hanover and see
Yeah, what, how much each of those
For Hanover? All right, moving down, down, you got the proposed indoor storage facility?
Yeah, so this is coming to the town council with an unfavorable recommendation. There was no remonstrances against this at the meetings that were presented. The town of Dyer has one that's currently under construction by the, the jewel area, which is a commercial area. And the town of Highland is considering one as well. It's a very unique property that they're, they're looking at because of the elevation changes, so it's a little bit challenging for development. This is, this is not an outside storage facility that was proposed, this is actually an indoor facility. So there's no metal building. There's, I think, 750 units that are proposed inside of this building, whereas the one that's proposed over on Hart Street and is moving forward, I think there was like 250 or 350, I'm sorry, 350 units in that one. So that gives you some proportion of size. Developer isn't asking for any kind of incentives on this project. The reason this had to go to the BZA was for, for a use variance because storage buildings are not permitted in a commercial area. So this truly is a council decision, the BZA was clearly following the rules. As they applied, the unfavorable recommendation wasn't unanimous. So something for you guys to consider, you got the, the paperwork presented to you, the copy of the minutes as well.
Thank you. Basically, I sat in as liaison on that meeting. It is a very, very nice facility. The fact that St. John is a more, is a more affluent community, being that it's environmentally controlled, you've got people who are having houses built here in St. John and with the supply chain problems and the material problems, people are having to leave their homes that they've sold. And what it comes down to is they're putting their furniture in the storage for one, two, and three months, so their home gets done. And the fact that it's environmentally controlled is very unusual. Security is not a problem because it's totally locked up. They have inside load and unload, so in other words, you're not sitting outdoors dragging your stuff inside. There's an indoor unloading zone that you can pull into to unload. Security is not an issue, it's an impressive building, nicely done. And as Joe said, the vote wasn't unanimous, but I was impressed with the building. It's really, really nice. It's not, you know, just aluminum siding or vinyl.
But it's the, there's what, 350 units in there or something like that, but now
Seven, seven
750. And my question was the, the outside, if you use a big brick like we have in Public Works compared to the cinder block that has all that roughness on it, do you get more money for your taxes on the brick than you do the cinder block? If they can do something like that and make the building on the outside look better?
Supposedly, that building is gonna generate somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 a year. Tiff revenue.
Right, and it's estimated, I think that the assessed value would increase by about 8 million in the Tiff district for that. So we're talking something in the scale of like a Target, something like that.
If, if we required, though, a brick, brickwork to look like Target, does that give us more tax money coming in? Or can they improve that a little bit? I was told that it makes a difference between hardy board, cinder block, and, and brick. Does that, I mean, can we check on that and to find out?
Remember what they were gonna, the buildings looked like their brick?
I think it had, it had a partial masonry front and then the rest of it was kind of in a, in a metal fashion. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that there was a masonry facade on it, there was glass. So it was, it wasn't, it wasn't a little cookie cutter, you know, kind of
It's not big like the one that they're doing in Dyer.
Oh, it's the same thing.
Same thing, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Wow, that's, that's a huge building.
That's a hu, well, 750 units is not a slight space.
Was it two stories or one?
It is a multi-story.
It's multi-story. I expected a gentleman to be here tonight, but he isn't.
He's here. But unfortunately
No, you can't
Unfortunately, you can't, you can't
You can't talk.
All right. We appreciate your coming. But maybe, Wayne, that might be a conversation, maybe you can have one off with him.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But this will be on the agenda for the council's, or decision at the next meeting, next week.
Next Wednesday, Thursday, whatever.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah, our meetings are Wednesday, really.
Maybe I'll be absent. All right, any other questions on this item?
Nope.
I will move along to the revisions to the town meeting schedule.
Yeah, so this is kinda just coming back to you, just to let you know, the Stormwater Management Board and the Parks and Recreation Board had some changes to their meeting schedule, so we just wanted to give an, an update on this. Beth, I'm not sure, does the council have to take action on this as well or no? Okay, so this is just an FYI item, just so you guys have it.
Thank you.
And then Beth, I'm gonna let you talk on that next one there.
Any questions on the meeting schedule? Nothing? Okay. Now we'll move to the stale dated checks resolution.
Stale dated checks are just checks that have remained outstanding and unpaid for a period of two or more years. So we need to clear them off the books by voiding them.
Is my name on any of them?
No.
You got it like that.
Anything for a few extra bucks, eh, Mike?
That's good.
No, he's got it like that, he don't need money like that.
Quick question, so obviously we want, we wanna pay people what we owe them. This is from people who have not cast checks that we were, that we owed money to. Is there, is there an effort to, to contact them and get the money to them?
That would be, I mean, no, I'm not gonna call people and ask them to cash their check. But if certain departments would like to call people and ask them to cash their check, they'd be more than willing to do so. I mean, I know at one point Rick Everly did a whole effort to get people to do something with the escrow releases. So you would just have to assign that duty to somebody, but I'm
Yeah, cuz I see, well, I see a few names here that we do business with regularly.
Sure, oh, you can call them, they're over two years old, but yeah, you could call them.
It's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's a thousand dollars.
And the Banks won Cash Mazer.
Banks aren't gonna cash them, no.
They're stale dated.
They're stale dated.
We do business with them.
Banks won Cash.
Would the town reissue those or how does that?
I mean, if somebody from the departments would like to contact them and track them down, a lot of times addresses have moved, you can contact them and then void the check and then we'd reissue a new check, but
What's that do to your budget?
Well, it's, it's already off, it's already
It's already off the books.
Off the books, we're just, but that wouldn't be
That could be.
Me to do. But if you'd like, like Pebblebrook Homes, you know, that's Bob Veresen, you could have Sergio call up.
Who's Jerome Ezel?
Who's Jerome L. Ezel, $3,400?
Remember when you guys were on the police commission, you had hired Jerome Ezel to do the
That doesn't ring a bell, that name.
No, yeah, he did the review on the chief of police.
Oh, okay. I know who he is now.
When you guys were on the police commission, you guys contracted Jerome Ezel.
Contact person, we, I remember, with not that same name.
He didn't catch his check.
I know, yeah.
That's a 3,400.
I was gonna say, that's a chunk of change.
So if the police department wants to contact Jerome Ezel and ask him if he would like to
Yeah, Darrell's laughing.
Have a new check written, I mean, I
Yeah, laugh it up, Darrell.
Yeah.
Okay, very interesting.
I'll, I'll talk to Sergio about some of these escrow refunds, cuz that's, that's a lot of money to leave on the table. I mean, obviously
There's also an ordinance for that, if they don't cash them in a certain amount of time, it reverts back to the general fund, so
They're on that?
No, not really.
If you owe people money, you should pay them.
That's fine.
Well, we did, we did pay them.
But if you pay them and they lose the check I understand that, but something's happened here, right? So we're doing, you know, they, something, these guys are not crazy, right? They get, something's
There's no telling in today's world, Mike.
At what point do you say, hey, I'm gonna send you another bill?
Because it's good for me, doesn't mean to get the kids money.
Or you're gonna pick up the phone and you're gonna say, hey, Town of St. John, I, I didn't get my $1,000 check.
Right.
Can you check your records on that? I mean, at some point, the payees should take some responsibility because the checks were, were written, they were approved, they were mailed. They sat on it for two years. But if you guys wanna leave them on the books, we can leave them.
And as far as the, the bill reef, the final bill refund, are those items that I, I don't know what, were those, I mean, we didn't mail a check for
We do.
77 times.
We do.
My goodness.
Yeah.
It costs us more to mail them another one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions on the stale dated checks?
None for me, but I, if this was your idea to have this meeting, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem, Wayne.
This was a great one, Mike, it was a great idea.
Sit here, ask all your questions, so next week it should go
Nice and smooth.
Easily.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming out. Okay, guys, we're done. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved?